Good evening, welcome to the West Shore Planning Commission meeting for November 15th, 2016. We do have all seven commissioners present at this this evening. Uh, we have two items on our consent calendar, sorry, one item on our consent calendar, which is the, the mention of our November 1st meeting.
Motion to approve.
Mr. Schosky, yes. Motion by Commissioner Schosky, seconded by Commissioner Quinney. Discussion to that motion. All bearers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. And then one business item, which we discussed fairly well in our meeting downstairs, which are the, uh, the calendar for our meetings for calendar year 2017. Commissioner Schosky.
Thank you. Uh, move to approve as it is in the agenda.
Motion by Commissioner Schosky, seconded by Commissioner Hanson. Discussion to that motion. All bearers say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven to zero. We have three public hearings tonight. The first one being Ganson Carriages, which was continued from our last meeting. We are considering a future land use map amendment, uh, and a rezone, um, for Oakwood Homes. Jake Holmes, the applicant, the applicant present. What's the time over here, sir?
Good evening. Like to thank all of you for the opportunity to be here tonight. Um, as stated, we're looking into a rezone and a general plan text amendment on this property uh, to a residential use. Um, as included in your packets, um, this property would yield some more traditional, single-family style homes and lots, um, and that's what we're trying to go for here. Um, it will bring a better use to this property. So, any questions or comments regarding?
Any questions for the applicant?
Sure.
Commissioner Green?
I'll take a shot. Uh, for this particular piece of property, what are the amenities that you plan on putting in this development?
Um, as per the PRD code, there's a 15% open space requirement. And so, um, as of now, we would intend to do, uh, some nicer, uh, open space. As far as the particular amenities, uh, those would be more addressed at the subdivision application. We're still finalizing what we want to do in there.
So you don't have any amenities at all right now proposed?
Um, not that we would propose before the council. Um, we would hope to be able to do, uh, some sort of playground or amenity, maybe some possible, uh, sports amenities as far as, you know, sports court type of things, that sort of, sort of use.
Um, my next question is, I'm looking at the application itself and it shows the property owner is Donald Ganson. I don't see anything else in the packet. Was that provided? That, that also had, uh, his wife's signature, Stephanie's signature, or Gary Cannon's signature on these?
We have affidavits.
We have those affidavits, okay.
Any other questions for the applicants? Doesn't look like it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Hearn?
So this property, Don Ganson's property, and there's actually several property owners that Don Ganson owns the majority of, and who sat owns, um, the portion right to the north, and then Garrett Cannon owns a strip of property also. Um, but the property is located at 8679 South Redwood Road. Um, it's right, almost right across the street from Blind Air Street. It's about six and a quarter acres in area. It's right west of the Dove Meadows subdivision. Uh, that's went in a few years ago. Uh, the applicant is requesting, uh, two things from the planning commissioner, recommendation on a land use map amendment for a professional office, uh, to high-density residential, and then a zone change from rural residential one-acre lots, uh, to a PRD H or plant residential development, high-density, uh, zone. Uh, as for the PRD code, before a zone change can occur, they need to submit a concept plan. This concept plan is different than the one that was submitted two weeks ago because, um, the potential home builder has changed. Uh, there's a much less dense product than before. It was right at 10 units per acre before. Now it's right around seven units per acre. And as Mr. Holmes said, uh, the concept plan shows the lots laid out more in a traditional subdivision style. The open space, um, majority of the open space will be between the Redwood Road corridor and the homes, uh, to, uh, east of that. It's, um, just about an acre, well, not quite an acre of open space between there. So it will offer, uh, conceptually at this time, a nice buffer between Redwood Road and, uh, new homes, um, as they're constructed. Also, another thing, uh, shown on the concept plan is the connection of, of Gardner Lane that would be finished out and connected to Redwood Road. Uh, Gardner, well, this, I don't believe it's called Gardner Lane at this point, but, uh, Dove Meadows has ended, but this connector, uh, will finally be accomplished. And that will, that would occur whether it's a residential subdivision, uh, or a office use. That is a connector, uh, Collector Road on our Streets Master Plan, and so it is vital for the circulation of the area. Uh, as, you know, there, there's not a lot of connectors between Redwood Road and 1300 West. Now, it'd be kind of a roundabout way, but it does offer another way to get to 1300 West and both by vehicle and pedestrian use. And finally, the, the last slide, I've, I've, I've done this on a couple other, uh, zone change, but it shows the density, uh, of the proposal would be at seven dwelling units per acre. Uh, the project to the south is about seven and a half dwelling units per acre. Now, a lot of those were built in the early eighties. I believe, uh, a lot of those are duplex dwellings in that location, but it still is a very dense development. And Dove Meadows, um, is about six and a half units, uh, per acre. Then Aingley Farms across Gardner Lane is about four dwelling units per acre. And so that's really all I've got. Um, you know, according to what I've read, the applicant has met all of the, the criteria, uh, for the land use map amendment, and the zone change, and staff recommends that the planning commission forward this with a positive recommendation to the city council. Do you have any comment or questions for me?
Thank you. Questions for staff, Mr. Green?
On this map, it shows seven units per acre.
Mm-hmm.
Yet in the report, it says 9.2.
Yeah, because, um, that, that was my fault, because I got lazy, because I'd already done one report and so I didn't want to do another, and so this is accurate. It's seven.
The seven is accurate?
And Judy pushed me and begged me, but she just wouldn't budge. And so, I take that full up on me. That's my fault. But it is seven dwelling units per acre.
So Gardner Lane where it ends right now, that was always a stub road then and anticipated to go through the?
Yeah, so that's correct, mate, right? That's a master planned road, incredibly. Yeah.
When we get to subdivision, what kind of a, what kind of a barrier will there be along Redwood? What, what does code require for a PRD?
Um, well, what, what this applicant is showing conceptually is this large open space.
So that's the only buffer? There wouldn't be any requirement for, uh?
No, of all, of all.
Oh, okay, there would be. All right. And that would be one of the pre-casts?
Oh, yeah. Oh, it's a Collector Street, so my street would require a street wall, with trees every 25 feet.
You.
Um, I don't look at that necessarily as a buffer. I look at it as a street wall with trees, but it's, of course.
Any other questions for staff? Very good, thank you. Uh, this is the first of our three, um, I just blinked, uh, public hearing items this evening. Uh, to introduce our public hearing process, uh, as we open the public hearing, anybody who would like to speak on a particular item is invited up to microphone. If you would kindly give us your name and contact information, that way staff can follow up if you, if there's any particular items, uh, or questions, concerns that they would like to after the fact. You would have three minutes to, uh, to make your comments. Uh, as you hit the end of that three minutes, a buzzer will go off. If you would kindly wrap up your comments at that point, we would appreciate it. Uh, one individual did submit a comment card, so we would ask him up first. Uh, Mr. Russell Weiser?
Uh, my name is Russell Weiser. I live at 8708 South Diamond Dove Drive in the Diamond, or the HOA. I'm the president of the HOA for Diamond Dove Meadows. Um, I back up to the fence where these houses are going to be. Um, and, and my basic comments are that, um, I'll start with Gardner Lane. Um, it's going to cause a lot of traffic, noise, or the residents on that side of the, uh, development. They only have a vinyl fence. Um, it's going to increase the traffic probably, I'm guessing, probably tenfold on that, on that lane, uh, where right now it's very quiet. So there's a lot of concern about that. Um, I believe when Dove Meadows was put in, the originally thought was this piece of property would be tied to Dove Meadows. I don't care if it is or not, but part of that plan, I think it was about 13 years ago, was there would be a street light out on Redwood Road put in that the developer would have to pay for. I don't see that in any of the plans or any of the discussions. So that's a concern. I have concern, we have a gate. We don't have enough space. We don't have a turn lane to go into our gate, or gate is right up against the street. Um, if our gate doesn't open, we can pile up six, seven cars. We'll be blocking traffic. So trying to figure out some kind of turn lane or something where if our gate isn't working, we can resolve that would be good. Um, I'm concerned also on the south side of the property, there's an irrigation ditch. Nothing is being said that that would be turned into a pipe and, and pipes from now on. Uh, the last year, one of our neighbors had mosquito problems because they weren't cleaning out that irrigation ditch, and he was climbing the fence and doing it himself. So that's an issue. I'm a little concerned about the green space all up in front next to Redwood Road. Are you going to put a playground right on Redwood Road? I don't think that's a good idea. It would be nicer if some of the green space was back towards us, so we don't have a house, a two-story house, you know, within 10 feet of our property. Our yards are very small already, so, plus it's going to be two-story dwellings, so I'm going to have people looking in my bedroom. So those are my concerns.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who would like to comment on this item?
Thank you very much. My name is Lane Odell. I'm the next door neighbor to Russ. In the original, uh, plot map that you guys sent out, across the back, uh, in the back corner, we would have had six homes. They weren't plots, but we would have actually had six homes across there. In the new one, we're going to have eight. Uh, I'd like to know if you could a- answer me, how far is the home setback from the property line, from the back to the foundation?
So we'll, to make sure that's all captured, hold the grudge, we can catch you after a second on that question.
If I could get that answered, please. But, but, uh, we have, I have about eight feet from my foundation to my fence. If we have eight homes across there, and some of these homes are two and three-story, we're, we're facing a wall, much like the Bangor or Sound Wall. Um, we absolutely can't see out. We will have, um, the models of the homes show, uh, decks in the back that would be looking right over our fence. We've lost a hundred percent of our privacy. Uh, the only privacy I ever had in my entire yard is in between my next door neighbor to the east, about a 12-foot section there that we share. Uh, so I, um, I would like to see a net recommendation that we, we go, uh, lengthen those lots a little bit, or widen those lots along the back, and maybe go back to the, the six homes instead of the eight homes. It gives a little bit more room, uh, so we don't feel like we're just caged in. Thank you.
Thank you. What would the required setbacks be?
Just kind of looking it up right now, so, we'll, we'll get that.
Nate, do we have a timeframe on when that signal would be installed at Redwood and Gardner there?
No. Um, what it is, is that's a, the city has a, a right-of-way, it's called a, a corridor access agreement with UDOT. So the, when the signal comes in, it'll be installed by UDOT at their cost, but they won't do it until it meets warrants. And, um, so a warrant analysis, traffic study would have to take place, and, and we could request that. We could request it now. I doubt it would be meet your warrants, but if the commission wants to request that, we could make that request to UDOT. Um, if you recall, a couple years ago, on, on Ninety South at 10 something west, um, the same, there was the same concern, and so we requested a warrant study there, and it didn't meet the warrant at that time. Uh, I don't think this would meet the warrants now. Once the road is built, and the, uh, traffic is, wasn't analyzed at that point, it, it may, but it's still kind of iffy. But at any time, we can request that study of UDOT. They'll do the study, and if it meets the warrant, then they'll put it into their, 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 their queue for signal projects.
So what would trigger that on our end? At what point would we say, okay, let's look at this and?
We could ask them anytime, and they'll, they'll conduct a warrant study.
What would you like to see happen before you would ask for that study?
Um, at least have the road constructed.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
The setbacks are all based upon the development plan that will be submitted with the subdivision and the PRD zone. You know, and I want to add that this is a concept plan, you know, and I'm taking notes of all, and if it gets to the point of preliminary subdivision, then we'll, we'll discuss these, you know, very, very real concerns to the neighbors, and I think it's good that they're, they're bringing these up at this time, so.
Anybody else who'd like to comment on this item, please?
Hello, I'm Michelle Aubrey. I'm from the Dove Meadows as well. And before I forget, some people want to know when to start the equity. And second, um, I'd like to know if the plan for the Gardner Lane to be opened is final or not. And if it is final, because it is a very large road that connects to 1300, we are going to have problems with the speed over there. Um, there's a lot of children walking home from school, and as of right now, there's a, there are a lot of cars that are going 35, 40 miles an hour. So what do you plan on doing if that's the case? Because a lot of people try to cut the tra- cut through traffic by cutting through the neighborhood. So, so what would be the solution to this? And also as well, um, I can understand that you want an opening for the new residents to have access to their houses instead of just opening up, um, just on Redwood Road. But what is logic between, um, opening the whole lane? Because I don't see a need for this. We've lived years without, uh, having that line open. We have gone around. It's never been a problem. And, um, I was reading on the PDF that you submitted, um, on the website, that, uh, the reasoning was that it's more, it's better for emergency vehicles, the utility to get there. But you know what? We've never had any problems with this. So if this is the argument for opening the lane, I don't see that being a valid argument. So if you could let me know what your solutions are to the problems. And if you are going to open that road, we need to have huge speed bumps all over. So, thank you.
Thank you.
I'll be short and sweet. I just want to know when you're going to address all these comments. They're, they've said what concerns are. When are we going to hear back responses?
So Larry brought up a really good point, probably worth reemphasizing. The discussion tonight is only on the changes to the future land use map and the zoning. Uh, as Larry mentioned, this will come back at another phase when we talk about the specifics of everything from layout to, to roads and setbacks and all of those different things, uh, the amenities as set forth in the code for the PRD zone. So tonight, we're only discussing the, the map and the zoning component of that. Commissioner Schosky?
Uh, just to let the Judy know that, uh, that she, uh, uh, I can't talk. She's leaving because of family health concerns.
Thank you. So with that in mind, is there anybody else who'd like to comment on what we're looking at this evening?
Um, LQ1 from Aingley Farms. Um, so why is it the plan here is I don't see any visitor parking in the new area. So does this mean my people is going to park outside of the street if it was open? I know you mentioned we should not talk about the road, but this is what I'm concerned. Like, there is no visitor parking, and if the road has been built, we need to have a sidewalk. And I don't see there's a sidewalk on the north side of the road. So it's like freezing for residents to walk. So that's it.
Thank you.
Last call. Anyone else? We will then close the public hearing and bring it back to commission. Commissioner Hearn?
Well, thank you, Mr. Hearn. I, I just wanted to reiterate what you said again, that we certainly appreciate all the public comments, and we don't want anyone to feel that their answers aren't being addressed. I know sometimes it's hard to understand the scope of exactly what we're looking at for certain, um, applications, and sometimes I need to ask staff and collaborate with other, uh, commissioners just to ensure that we're looking at just what we should be looking at. So please rest assured that all of this will be looked at at the proper time. It does go through different phases. Um, and this is, we just can't put the cart before the horse and have all the answers to all the questions that have been tendered already until we take care of this business and then it goes forward, uh, another step. So thank you again for coming to the, the public process.
Mr. Hearn?
All right, I'm going to start in. Um, where do I start? I am absolutely a hundred percent opposed to this project. Uh, let me, let me just give you a couple of reasons why, and I am actually going to go to the PRD section of this, starting on page four first, and, and, and page five and page six. But, uh, there's, there's, there's some problems with this development as it is proposed. And we know that under the PRD, um, the concept plan is the guide, and although it can be modified some, we know that it won't be. The first problem I have with this is that we're seeking seven units per acre. And there, we heard the applicant say that the only amenity that he has proposed right now is 15% open space. I'm going to refer to 135C8 in the code, and it specifically says, "Density bonuses may be applied in any PRD zone. If no bonus is applied, the lowest density defined in subsection 135C3A1 of this article shall be used." Since there's no amenities, as the applicant clearly testified, the only, the, the, the requirement that the only zoning density that this person can have, this applicant can have, given the layout, is the low zone at one to three units per acre. We can't go seven. We can't go nine. And even if you do the math and you add, uh, the 10-foot park strip equals .1, uh, we'd have to have a whole lot of swimming pools, tennis courts, barbecue pits, and themed lighting and alleys to anywhere come close to doubling, more than doubling the density on this project. So for that reason alone, I think that we have to reject it. But just going through this down number two, uh, just, just to go through a couple of the items, uh, this doesn't meet number two. Uh, it doesn't allow for a variety of uses and structures and encourage imaginative concept and design. It does not meet number six. It does not produce a balanced and coordinated mixture of uses in public-related private facilities. And the staff report says, well, it's because it's small, we can't do that. If it, if we can't do that, then it doesn't meet the intent of the PRD. Number seven, it doesn't encourage a broad range of housing types. We know that we have the cap and grade, but the cap and grade also allows the 80, or the 70/30 rule. Uh, number nine, it does not encourage to provide for open land for the general benefit of the community because it's all fenced in. Uh, and number 11, uh, the intent of a PRD is best realized in a large-scale development. And this one says, well, the development's small, so the PRD's the only thing that fits. Uh, personally, on a personal note, I would just as soon see it stay professional office, and we develop professional office-type space along Redwood Road as putting more, from my perspective, and I, I drive down Redwood Road a lot. What I hate driving down Redwood Road is the few places we have down between Ninety and 7800 South where we have walls. All we do is drive down and see the back wall of a wall. We don't, we've got some other, we've got some, we've got some nice professional offices, and, and I think Redwood Road's in transition. I think the city's in transition. But to put residential homes, and I agree with the, I agree with the, the, the gentleman from the neighborhood that spoke, putting all the open space up on Redwood Road and compacting everything to the east, uh, doesn't, doesn't fit anything. Uh, I just don't buy that this works for this piece of property. And so, uh, as you can tell, I am steadfastly opposed to this. Thank you.
Commissioner Schosky?
Thank you, Mr. Hearn. Um, I agree in large measure with everything that Commissioner Green said. Um, one of the other things that I, that I would just add to that is that, um, with a wall right up against Redwood Road, um, it, it becomes a safety issue where, where businesses and that would be focused, eyes on the street. Um, providing a wall along that section of road would, would create a safety issue for people walking. Um, on top of that, um, it says in 135C dash one, "The purpose and intent of a PRD, uh, zone or planned residential development zone." The purpose of the planned residential development zone is to encourage imaginative, creative, and efficient utilization of land by establishing development standards that provide design flexibly, allow integration of mutually compatible residential uses. Uh, down a little farther, it says, uh, it says that optimum land planning with greater efficiency, convenience, and amenity than may be possible under the procedures and regulations of conventional zoning classifications. When I look at the idea that's been set before us, it looks like we've taken a conventional zoning, residential zoning idea, and we've compacted it and squashed it into a much smaller package. I don't see the amenities, and, and I definitely don't see, um, uh, any, anything that would improve upon a conventional zoning layout. All I see is that we're trying to cram as many houses into as small a space as possible. Um, and I know that we're not looking at the, uh, the site plan per se. However, um, looking at, as Commissioner Green said, this being a, a zone as an office space, I see that as a much more, uh, attractive, much more, uh, convenient, much more efficient use of this space than, than a very compacted housing building.
Thank you. Commissioner Hearn?
Thank you. Um, two years ago, when I interviewed for this, this, uh, this post, one of the things I talked about was this, this eyes on Redwood Road, and I think that I have to agree with what's been said. Putting a wall up and creating a neighborhood detracts from, from, uh, from what we're looking for. We don't, we don't need a corridor on Redwood Road. We need We need businesses that are going to invite commerce into the city. We can put the houses behind, behind the businesses, but we need businesses on Redwood Road.
Mr. Scotty?
That being said, I totally agree. We have very few major arterial routes that run through our city. And those are the places where we want businesses. They're, those are the main lanes that people travel by. And if we sell off this space to become residential, then we're selling ourselves short because these houses would be here for a long time. I, I think, yeah, everything that's been said, I agree with.
Okay. Any other comments, questions, concerns, discussion points? Commissioner Green's smiling over there.
No, Commissioner Green, he's egging me on to make a motion.
I just wanted to... Thank you. Well, if there's not going to be any more discussion, then I'm going to go ahead and make a motion.
I wanted to make one, one comment. Is there a compromise that we can make that would give the commercial development along Redwood Road so that that is the buffer and yet have enough room in behind to do some residential? The six acres of a business or office space, I don't see that, personally, I don't see that working. We have a ton of office space along there now. And can we fill six acres of, of office space? Do we need a little, it said mixed use. Well, we have, we could put mixed use up front with the office space and/or retail and still have a residential component in the back. I know it won't pencil out as well for a, for a developer, but it could be made, designed so that it could, it would be more compatible. It would, it would shrink down the housing in there. As far as the traffic concerns, the, the office space and the homes, if you had six acres of office in there, how much traffic is that going to create? I think a mixed, a mixed use there and a PRD calls for that. We're kind of in a dilemma with some of these... I thought you, I thought we said that the PRD has...
PRD's got mixed housing, if I recall, but PRD doesn't allow for mixed use.
We don't need to go any farther down this road. This deal with the applications before us and so we don't need to, this is what the applicant submitted. It's not your job this time to try to redesign something that'll work. And so, one thing I would ask Commissioner Laws is when the motion is done, that you remind the audience that they will be getting another notice because it will, it does go to the council. This is only a recommending body. And so that they're not upset because they're getting another notice.
Thank you. Commissioner Scotty?
Thank you. I was also going to, to say something to the same degree that we, we can't put business in there and that, that we're looking to that, tonight, really at just the zoning. If we change this to a PRD zone, then we really allow for a lot of... We allow for a lot of tight infill like this in this area. And, and I personally feel like it's better suited being that it's along the Redwood Road corridor as office space. All right. Okay, so I'm going to go ahead and make motion. Based on reading the staff report and the evidence that we've seen today and the discussion that we've had, I move that the planning commission forward a negative recommendation to the city council to amend the future land use map from professional office to high-density residential for approximately 6.25 acres of property located at 8679 South River Road. Specifically, we find the following required criteria for the future land use map that have not been met. And specifically, that would be in, on page four, under 13-5C-1, items 1, 2, 6, 9, and 11, as discussed in our meeting.
Which ones are you finding? Sorry, motion, Commissioner Scotty, seconded by Commissioner, any discussion of that?
So 1, 2, 6, 9, 11.
2, 6, 9, 11. Actually, I think these are not these.
So that's discussing the land use map at the moment. That would be for the...
Can you turn to the staff report?
So this would be for finding A, B, C, D, E, F.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay, so on this motion, finding A is not met because it doesn't conform to the general city plan for the benefit of the city. And that finding C, the proposed amendment, will be compatible with other land uses existing plan in vicinity.
Any discussion to that?
I would add D, that it doesn't constitute an overall improvement to the adopted general land use map.
Sounds like a friendly amendment. Amenable to that?
Amenable.
Yep. Okay. Any other discussion? So the motion stands, Commissioner.
I guess I had a bit of a misunderstanding in that if we do vote this, if we were to have a positive recommendation, then that would definitely take out the commercial component. So that being said, I agree with everybody on that part of it. But I still feel like it could be down the road.
So that might be some valuable information if the original applicant liked to revisit this and for some other reason. So motion as it stands right now is a negative recommendation for the future land use map amendment focusing on findings A, C, and D.
Correct.
Any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, motion carries six to zero.
All right now, considering the zoning, I would forward a negative recommendation to the city council to amend the future land use map from professional office space to high-density residential for approximately 6.25 acres of property located at 8679 South River Road specifically for the findings on page four through six, under item 1, 2, 6, 7, 9, and 11, based on our discussion in this meeting.
I would add 12 and second the motion.
Amenable.
Motion, Commissioner Scotty, seconded by Commissioner Green. Any discussions to that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. The next item on our agenda is a text amendment to several sections of, several portions of section 13, purpose and scope, park strip landscaping, materials and standards, general provisions, and regulations. We'll have exceptions for food, manufacturing facilities, maximums, user care, Papa Peter Bakery's the African, is the African present? Turn the time over to you.
So my name is Andrew Bochweiler with APB Architects. Also with me is the owner of Papa Peter Bakery. I don't know if you want me to add any additional comments to this or just read kind of the summary and let the staff. We're happy to do either or.
Anything you feel is relevant.
Okay. Well, I guess I'll just reiterate the purpose of this and then let staff report. Papa Peter Bakery is a SQF level three certified by an independent body. This is a major requirement of their facility for national customers such as Costco, Kroger, Walmart, and et cetera. The purpose of these amendments are for what we've outlined. In order to be certified annually, they have to comply with certain certification, public food safety, and reduce any and all risk of food defense program requirements. Controlled access to the site, which is one of the items we would discuss with the fence and the gate, also with the landscaping and trying to reduce the birds from flying into the facility and, and housing. So happy to answer any questions. I think the owner can speak to those requirements and certifications to a higher level than I can. Still happy to answer any questions.
Commissioner Scotty?
Thank you. So we've read about the bird problem to an extent. My question is, I'm wondering, is it, is it really a big problem to go out and clear out the bird nests periodically? How many birds are we talking about?
Yeah.
Thank you for the opportunity to come in and tell you about our issues. Whenever you have a tree, you get a lot of birds that basically go in that tree from predators, from sun, from weather. When you're in the plain sight of a doctor, those birds at night, they're 24/7 operation. The doctors, we have a lot of doctors, as soon as they open, they fly in. I'm a bird lover. We just absolutely do everything we can not to harm them. But unfortunately, once they get into a food facility, they become very, very, very difficult to, to catch. We've deployed many different practices to try to catch and release them. And it's, it's not an easy task. In fact, it's nearly impossible. Most of the time, we end up having to shoot the bird. And that causes all kinds of other problems in a food facility. We, food safety is very, very important. SQF level three is one of the highest food safety programs you can have. As you can imagine, when, when we make product that's sold to the public nationwide, there's a lot of safety issues that are involved. And so, once the birds get in, it's, if, once we get audited, and our audits are twice a year, unannounced, they come in, there's a bird in there, it's a major violation, two major violations, you can lose your certification. So we're not opposed to having trees. We love to beautification. We like to have a good landscape, really nice, presentable building. And however, having any kind of trees or tall shrubbery is just a magnet for birds. And I'm talking even a two-foot shrubbery. You'll be amazed at how many birds are in there at any given time. And when those doors are open, how fast they're flying when it's cold, winter, freezing, and, you know, when there's birds operating around. So that's really the main reason. I've owned the bakery for over 35 years, and we try to be good citizens wherever we are. And this is seriously a major problem. And you ask how many birds? They was just out there on expansion in our current facility. And you really, really get attacked. There are times where there are so many birds flying around that when you look up, you would think that, you know, that there's incredible food out there for them. And, you know, the smell attracts them, the light attracts them, and certainly food attracts them, so.
Is this a new certification that you've acquired?
No, we've had that for the last four years. Certain national programs require it. Costco requires it, now Walmart requires it, Nestle requires it. When you make product in their names, it becomes a very must-have or they won't, they won't allow you to make that. Part of the reason they're expanding is because of those kind of national accounts that we've been able to acquire.
So you recently applied for a conditional use permit as part of this expansion with street-facing doors, which required screening.
Yes, we did.
Why did this not come up at that point? You were specifically aware of those requirements for screening.
So, yes, so we did have this discussion with staff. In order to proceed and move forward on the project, we proceeded with putting trees in front and that we could come back and, and go for the text amendment after the fact. We're just trying to simply find a way to solve this problem with birds. So we were fully aware of the, of the, of the requirement. But it was the recommendation meeting with them, if, in order for us to move forward on construction, to meet our schedule with construction, we had to show up with the landscaping, with the trees, and that we could come back after, after that and submit and talk about a text amendment.
We are, we're still not opposed to the trees. Only the trees within the visual sight of the doctors. The other two sides of the property will have all the trees and management.
But it was a condition, that was a specific requirement of the conditional use permit, was those trees shielding those doors.
But this was brought up at the very, very beginning with the, with the planning commission.
Is this a make or break for this project, these, these trees?
Well, I guess I'd be breaking about $400,000, $500,000 investment so far in, in, in everything that we've made. When I first came to the city of West Jordan, at the time brought my first facility here six years ago from Salt Lake City, we had several concerns. At the time, meeting with the economic development committee and the city and things, I felt that city of West Jordan was very accommodating and understanding of, of businesses such as ours, such as mine, and that I proceeded with good faith, hoping that this would not be a, a major issue since we still have a beautiful property and we are going to make it nice. So this is a make or break. It's one of those tough decisions that that have to make after, after your decision.
So in our pre-meeting, we pulled up a map and we looked at a similar use here in town, Dunford Baker's. What's the difference there? They, they have trees in similar areas facing their loading doors?
They're not SQF level three certified. They're local. They make fried food. I'm not sure if they're not there 24/7 operations or not. I don't think so as far as I know. They're, you know, I can't speak for Dunford. I do know that they are only one of two bakeries in the state of Utah that is SQF level three certified. And we were the second to become. That was after Bimbo, which is a national, national bakery. They're, they're, they're very big.
Commissioner Scotty?
Thank you. I am aware that there are systems that you can, can put on your loading bay doors that are like strips of screening that as a truck would back in, it would, it would kind of push it out of the way. Would something like that be a fix or a solution to the problem?
Okay, so if I may say a couple of words on that. We have put spikes, bird, I don't remember exactly what they call it, to where birds can't come in and perch in the, in the dock area. We avoided anything in the building that they could come and sit closer to the thing to come in. Strips are, you know, one way of things, the product that we load are bread and packaged bread. Majority of them are not in boxes. They are fresh delivery going to, to these stores and they roll on racks and they're on trays. And hitting any kind of a plastic curtain or things, basically damages, could squeeze the product. And it's not, it's not very safe. You don't see the other side. There's a fast traffic going in and out loading trucks. And so it's, we have those in entrances where people go in and this would not, not attack any dock doors and that much product moving.
With to the other items, I think you referred to dock seals and so on and so forth from shelters. So we are putting those on. We're trying everything to eliminate the problem. So we are, we are going at the expense of adding dock seals and shelters to try and help as well.
Okay. Okay.
So, one of the criteria that we need to meet in order to approve this is, the proposed amendment does not relieve a particular hardship, nor does it confer any special privilege to a single property owner or cause.
Right, and I don't think we're trying to do this in single. Everything we talked about when we met with staff is, in general, this was to food trade facilities, food manufacturing, food distribution type facilities in general. So, I don't think we're trying to do this necessarily just for his property, his property alone, as the text amendment too would apply to, correct me if I'm wrong, it would apply to anybody, as we stated, to food manufacturing facilities or food distribution facilities. That's how, I mean, it's in general, it'd be for other people as well.
Commissioner Ray?
I have a couple of specific questions on the wording of a couple of these proposed text amendments, maybe you can help clarify. I'm trying to figure out, and that one I'll wait for staff. In one of the sections, it talks about that you want to have zero-scape landscaping as opposed to other landscaping, why the specifics to zero-scape? What does that have to do with birds and NSF certification?
Zero-scape is actually more expensive than the landscape. The kind of nice decorative rocks and things just adds the beautification. But certainly, our preference is anything that prohibits or reduces bird shelter that can sit and get the opportunity to fly into the facility.
Yeah, and I think, so, I think you're talking about section thirteen, three, eight, where it talks about low-lying shrubs, and we talked about native ornamental grasses, not farther than four feet. And the big reason, I mean, some of this might be a great field trip, you can go out there and look, but, so, the reason we said the grasses and stuff is the birds can't perch in the grass. We don't, they don't really have nests all over the place. What you're finding, they're just, they're sitting on fences, they're anywhere that they can sit on something and perch on something and wait, they are. I guess the only, only way to prove it is to go out there and look, don't have any food in your hands.
I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to figure out where, why we're going specifically with zero-scape there versus grass or something else.
Well, I guess, you know, lawn is one of those things that, we are, live in a desert, and again, I'm all about conservation, water, water is a big deal, since the city of West Jordan just recently. And, once again, the cost of a zero-scape is higher. And to me, it's beautiful, and most of the grass and most of the industrial park, they don't take care of it really well. Whereas, that was one of the things that I thought that would make the city look beautiful and manageable.
So, my next question would be then, why in thirteen, thirteen, six, are we going to plant coverage from forty percent to twenty percent? I'm trying to figure out what that accomplishes, other than the fact that we're just saying we have more rocks.
That's to a... Trying to find the section, sorry, on page four.
It's on our page four, if that helps.
Yeah, I think, I think what, I think the, I guess the point for this was, again, along those docks and ideas, to reduce the amount of shrubs and trees, plants, to eliminate the birds. Again, it's just to help reduce the number of birds.
I guess, I guess my question is, is if it's forty percent plants, if there are, the staff report talks about it, but there are all kinds of low, there are all kinds of low-growing plants. I mean, why are we trying to reduce the plants? And, I mean, I think part of the purpose of the ordinance is to have things look good and, you know, and have lots and have a good balance of plants, and I'm trying to figure out why low-growing plants wouldn't work here.
I guess it was a recommendation that we made to reduce the number. I mean, if you want forty percent of shrubs in front, then...
My original request was for zero-scape period. And then we met several times, they basically said, we don't think that's going to happen, but if you reduce it, then that might be a way. Again, that's half the amount of opportunities or places for birds to go in and come. That doesn't mean it's not going to, it's not going to take care of it, it's just going to reduce it. And so, clearly, my desire would be, we could do zero-scape altogether, but from what I understood, that's not possible.
Any other questions for the applicants? It's not likely to go at the moment, thank you.
I might add, I think in here, there was an alternate, or I saw it somewhere, that I think, I don't remember where it was at, that we talked about the possibility of those percentages still applying to the property, but not necessarily in that area of those dock doors. But, in other words, clustering in another portions of the property, so that overall percentages are perfect.
I think that's for food manufacturing, maybe located or relocated in an equivalent number to other landscape areas, okay?
And then I think the only one, other one that was in here that we haven't discussed is the fencing.
We're just asking that we would be able to close the gate during the non-business hours, when we shut down at certain times, which is really a few days a year. We are 24/7 facility, Christmas Day, Thanksgiving, so there are just a few days that we shut the whole thing down. Once again, after the Food Terrorism Act that came out, since nine eleven, many food safety laws changed. And one of the things that the SQF requires is that no access to places where food could be tampered with. Being a bakery, we have multiple silos, flour, and various liquids that are bulk that are placed outside, and all the places where those things are fed into, they're all closed, they have a lock, but it's still outside. And so, we pretty much shut down the access into those. We have cameras, we have things, but it's very dangerous to contaminate something that of that nature. So, any level of security we can add to that would be the type of things that would improve those. Many of the facilities nowadays, the food distribution centers, such as Cisco and US Foods and many others, they actually have a full-time gate and a guard to basically monitor all in and outs. We are not at that level to have that kind of a thing. But a gate that we can close during those days that we are not there throughout the year, that period, would just be one less to worry about that people can get in.
Did you see staff's comment on that item? They don't see any reason why you could not secure your property after hours?
Right, I was led to know.
Oh, okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Mr. McHale's?
Thank you. I'm not sure how you want me to proceed with this, but maybe we just walk through each of these, and then I'll say who am I, or...
You guys like to have a seat while we continue?
Starting with the, again, I think it's important, again, to realize, to recognize that anytime you do a text amendment, applies to the, across the citywide. And so, this was talked about, I think it's important, I think where we were coming from is that we, you know, although this text amendment is for one individual, will apply to all food processing businesses that are in the city or will come into the city. With the first, I think with the first section, it's thirteen dash twelve dash one, what I've got here on the overhead is, anything in blue is, I think the applicant had given us recommendations, some suggestions for text in different parts of the code, as they've talked about. But this just, like I said, highlights what they're, they're looking at, or how they're looking at changing the text. For this first section, thirteen dash twelve dash one, this is a purpose and scope section. It's part of the parking code. So, really, it's, as it is a purpose section, it really, this doesn't really belong here. It talks about the needed and secure sites. And I think where this was coming from is in that first sentence, it says, "This chapter establishes standards for maintenance of adequate, but not excessive off-street parking for vehicles using persons expected to come to an establishment at any time under normal conditions." We really don't see that, why the applicants can't secure their property. I think normal business hours are normal conditions. You know, as long as they meet the fence setback and height restrictions and the fire departments have access to it for emergencies, we don't really have an issue with it. So, our recommendation, at least for this recommended change, is not to change this part of the code, because it's something that's already covered.
So, on this particular part of the ordinance, is the ordinance restrictive or permissive? I mean, if it's not there, you can do it? Is that what we're saying, or do we have to explicitly allow the permission in this particular? That's where I'm trying to get the perspective here. I mean, I'm of the, I'm of the opinion, most of the time, if it's not prohibited, you can do it. But that's, but I'm trying to, but I don't know this section of the city code well enough to know what we're after there.
Yeah.
Oh, if, the code does talk about fencing requirements or fencing standards, it does allow fencing in the manufacturing districts, so it's permitted use, it just, like I said, it has certain height restrictions and certain back restrictions, so...
But there's no prohibition on a gate?
No.
That we can see, as long as it means fire code?
No. Okay, this next section, this is trees in the park strip. On, in this, I think one of the real concerns, it sounds like what they're talking about is the trees themselves, and trees in the parks, the park strip. We're kind of neutral on this change. We think that it's probably okay to, if the loading doors are close to the park strip areas, we don't see a reason why those trees couldn't be shifted to another location on the side. So, what we did is just gave some additional language in your staff reports to say, yeah, something that we can look at. But we just picked a number out of the air, you're certainly welcome to change this, if you feel like this change is acceptable, you know, if required park strip trees are within three hundred feet of any overhead doors, or loading docks, they can be, basically just be relocated in equivalent number elsewhere on the side. The only thing that we can see is that it does change the look of the streetscape a little bit, because you don't have the trees there, but they'll be located elsewhere on the side. So, that's kind of the downside to this approach. The next, the next change would talk about the plant coverage, they're requesting it be reduced to twenty percent, but I think as we, or the, I think what the planning commission is thinking is that there are a lot of other options for ground cover or plant species that are available that don't necessarily attract birds. And so, for this reason, we really don't see that, or there's a need to change that or reduce that amount of vegetation or plant coverage. The next one is, I forgot, let me just... The next change would be, if, what the applicant's recommendation is the doors are a hundred feet or greater away from the public way, and screening's not required. So, the decorative wrought iron fencing would be acceptable, screening along with burning if possible. But again, we think that this is more of a site plan related issue. The planning commission feels that those, you know, a hundred feet is really not that far from, is not a huge distance. It's kind of like ten or eleven parking stall width, just to give you some perspective. But we really don't think that a hundred feet is adequate for no screening, if the planning commission feels like this requirement should stay in effect. We think that, like I said, that screening issue really is kind of a site plan or a condition of use-related matter, but really don't see a need to change the code from what it is now. I think those are the, those are the changes, and once I missed one. So, if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
If I could just jump into regarding the screening, Commissioner Loz, you mentioned that this has already gone through conditional use permit for screening. I know that as we've brought other industrial projects, or for that similar conditional use permit approval, the commission is kind of throwing around a couple other ideas, you know, architecturally enhance the doors with, you know, an awning or some sort of entry feature to dress up that build, that side of the building. That's certainly available to the commission for consideration too, it just wasn't included here. But I know that the commission has talked about that in the past, as he reviewed other projects. So, architectural enhancements, distance from the right of way, all of those things could be in play with thirteen, fourteen, three, with that section, so...
So, if we did a combination of architectural enhancements to the doors and a decorative wrought iron fence, would that come closer to meeting the intent of the screening requirement for those front-facing doors?
I think so, yeah, if you read that part of the code, yeah. And one other quick point of clarification, is the planning commission talks about the proposed changes, there is a difference between the plant coverage and tree requirements, they're two distinct things, so just to make sure that you're aware of that.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? No? This is also agenda, this is a public hearing, so I would open it up if there is anybody who'd like to comment on this item. Very well, we'll close the public hearing and continue the discussion here. Commissioner Tossi?
Thank you. It bothers me just a little bit that we saw this as a front-loading door conditional use permit, and that it's now coming back and the screening requirement that was set is asking. And I'm not suggesting that that was like subversive, but kind of feels that way a little bit. On the other side, I can see, I can see where there would be a problem with birds flying into food facility. And I feel like as a city, our duty is for, you know, the public health, safety, and well-being of everyone, including our businesses and residents. So, from that standpoint, you know, anything that we can do to help businesses of this nature to be able to have an easier time operating, will make businesses of this nature want to be in our city, which is in our best interest, and in their best interest, in my opinion. But, I don't know, I just, I lean towards allowing the change, you know, some of the changes at least, for the simple fact that it would be a benefit to all of those businesses. That's it.
Would you be amenable then to modifying that exception? I don't know about the hundred-foot thing, I don't know if that's relevant, but you're saying the decorative wrought iron fencing, in addition to architectural enhancements, would be acceptable as screening along? in addition to architectural enhancements, would be acceptable as screening along with burning where possible?
Yeah, as long as it was, I think as long as it was something that would have to have been drawn up and brought before the planning commission so that we can see what it is, you know, before, before approval, then, you know, then I, I think that that would be amenable.
So outside of this, could we, could we do this at a, a revisit of the conditional use and reconsider different aspects of that? We looked, we did another building recently, it might have been under the same section of code that had some really nice architectural enhancements to the doors.
Right.
Okay, all right. Commissioner Green?
I, I, I tend to pretty much echo what, where you're going. What I hate to see is creating too many exceptions. The more exceptions we create in policy, the more convoluted it becomes. You know, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the, the twenty percent plant coverage. And honestly, I can't see the difference between twenty and forty percent. I used to do landscaping when I was a kid and we put, there's all kinds of low lying plants. And, you know, when we're talking about zero escaping, there's lots of plants that can be put in there. As far as I understand, the city ordinance doesn't, it, it just says forty percent plant. So you can put a combination of bark and mulch and rocks and all those other kinds of things to make this beautiful under the current city ordinance, if I understand it correctly.
Correct, however, you do, the, the forty percent is living ground cover.
Right.
So.
Yeah, so, but, so that means the sixty percent can be rocks and mulch and pebbles and waters, water, water features in a zero scape would really work. But it, it, it can be any of that combination and we don't prohibit it. So I, I, I see that particular section as unnecessary. I see the gate section as unnecessary. I don't like in, in the one section where it talks about zero escaping. I'm not sure that I like the fact that we're putting an exception and then we're going to require. I mean, if you read that, it says for food manufacturing facilities, zero scape is permitted. And that's almost saying, well, that's what you will do. I just say, as soon as I say, you know, use the, use the landscaping under the code and call it good. And I, I agree with you. I think that if you move the trees from other places, you're, you're good. Which leads me to the last section on the screening that we're talking about. Personally, we're in an, now this, this is personal philosophy versus actual ordinance. Personally, we're in an M one zone and I really don't care when I drive through an M one zone if the dock door is screened or not. Doesn't make any difference to me. The, I, obviously there's an intent behind that to try to keep the manufacturing facilities more pleasant, for lack of a better term, in the city with better planning. Really doesn't make much difference to me. I'm afraid though, I hate too many, like I said, I hate too many exceptions because then everybody wants to use the exception as the rule. And I don't know how I sit with the, with the, I, I mean, I agree with, with Commissioner Laws that when we have the architectural additions, then that helps alleviate the issues that the screening was supposed to prevent. I don't like the term burning where possible. I, I think if we burn stuff, we burn it, if we don't, we don't. I don't like the, the verbiage that if the doors are more than a hundred feet or greater from the public way, then no additional screening is required. I think the intent and purpose of the, the ordinance is to have some sort of screening. And so that particular line, I can't live with at all. If it's more than a hundred way, a hundred feet away, then I think we come up with some sort of, if it's, if it's a hundred feet or more away, then we come up with wrought iron fences, additional landscape stuff. But to actually say that the doors are more than a hundred feet away from the public way, no additional screening required, I can't live with that particular line. I can come up with something that says, hey, if it's a hundred feet away or more, let's do this and I can buy that. And I don't know what that would be. I think some additional architectural stuff would work. The wrought iron fence would help break it up.
Commissioner Pack?
Great, thank you, Mr. Chairman. And to me, I, I want to make sure that we're being business friendly. The applicant has already mentioned a significant investment that he's made into doing business in West Jordan. I, I, I can see what, what you're saying, Commissioner Green, that the more exceptions there are, then everybody's got an exception. But at the same time, it's not one size fits all. Obviously, there's pertinent reasons here why food manufacturing would be different than, let's say, sheet metal roofing, you know, in terms of cleanliness and food certification quality. I, I completely see that. So to me, it seems like that two things amalgamated into one, a little bit of apples and oranges here. I'm totally for not having the tree necessity where the current code says they need to be, especially when we're just saying they can be moved and clustered throughout the site, you know, move them around. They're still going to have the trees, they're just not going to be right there where the birds are going to feel the heat, smell the bread, want to see the light and go right inside. So to me, I have no problem with that. In a way, I wish these were two separate ideas here. Because to me, it's the, the main idea is that trees where the birds reside, as well as large shrubs. And I guess, you know, if we're talking about twenty to forty percent shrubbery, I guess that means there's double the birds because there's double the shrubbery. And so personally, I agree with making it more business friendly by allowing the trees to be moved. We still have the same amount of trees. And is there a way that we can separate this so that we're approving that part? Because all I see is the recommendation at the end, you know, based on the findings, we either approve or don't approve. But it's looking like we're kind of saying, wow, we, we kind of, we like this idea, but maybe not this idea. So how can we parcel that?
Well, we can forward a recommendation that says yes, no, yes, no, add this.
Okay, great.
Because birds are passing this on the city council.
Great. And that, that's where I stand, is that it seems like we're talking about aesthetics in one area, but functionality in another. You know, we need to move the trees so the birds aren't there.
Look, and I agree with you, the, the tree, the tree issue, we can move the trees and you got trees. You know, and that helps the, the business and that's business friendly. You know, the aesthetics as far as the screening for the, the gate goes is a separate issue. I don't, like I said, I don't see any reason to say that they, you have to have an ordinance so you can put a gate on here. Because they can. So there, there's a couple of these that I think are unnecessary. I think there's a couple, there's, I think you're right, the one that we're talking about, the trees. I agree with you, that's the business, that's the, that's the most business friendly part of this. You know, the, the forty percent, twenty percent plants. I think there's plenty of plants that you can go low ground, low growing and, and not have them be, you know, not have them be home to birds. If somebody could get rid of the birds out of my raspberry bushes, I'd be happy, but that's a different story. So, yeah, I, I think we, I, I think you're right. I, I think that the, at least from my perspective, I think there's four or five major changes that we want to go through here. And I think that what we probably ought to do is just go through each one and say, do we want to recommend this one? Recommend that change to the council, yes or no? And then go to the next one and do the same thing that we, because they are separate text amendments. Instead of saying, hey, this is, this is all for one or one for all, let's, I, I say we go through each one and maybe we, you know, there are four or five here, it's not that hard to say, hey, you know, let's take a vote on each, on each one and where we're at with that or, or make the language change on each one that we all agree with and have a vote on those and, and, and do that.
I think we could do that as all inclusive motion though. Recommending for this section or recommendation.
We could probably do that too.
Commissioner Skoski?
Thank you. Well, just to kind of reiterate, I, I feel like, you know, as laws change, you know, with Food Security Act, et cetera, then we kind of have a responsibility to look at our laws again and, and go through them and see if they mesh up. I think that's one of the biggest problems in my naive, limited understanding on planning is that there's a lot of pieces that don't match because of that. Where an antiquated law will change and then these other antiquated laws stay the same and it creates kind of a bottleneck. So I'm fully in favor of adjusting some of these. I, my question is on page four in thirteen dash fourteen dash three, where we're talking about the hundred feet or greater away from the public way, screening is not required. I don't like that, I would like to strike that. Are we dipping into another portion of the code by stating that, you know, like doors that face the road or, or that would have to have some sort of design element? Are we looking at another portion of the code entirely? Do we have to address that as well as address this particular versing? Or to kind of wrap it all up into one unit?
So with this card, yeah, I think what you're saying is with this card, with the conditional use aspect of front loading doors in M one zone.
Yeah, that, it's all encompassed in thirteen dash fourteen dash three. So we're not dipping into. And, and that's a great question because oftentimes when you, when you pick at a thread, it just, yeah.
Right, I don't want to wrap things. So by changing, if we were to change this, it would take care of that at the same time?
Yep.
Okay. I wonder then, would it be prudent to put the verbiage, something to the effect of when front loading doors are viewed from the street, then doors may be screened by, by vegetation and trees? Or they may have decorative wrought iron and design elements that would be approved by both the design review committee and the planning commission? Is that something that would be appropriate?
Would that by default go to the design review though? Any architectural aspects of a building?
Typically, M one buildings do not go to, to even the planning commission, so.
Unless.
Unless they have a front facing door.
One more thing is that wrought iron may not be the end all. There may be some other types of things that would be appropriate.
So maybe just scratch wrought iron and just say, design elements that would break up.
A combination of design elements that would.
I, yeah, I think I, I like that, a combination of design elements because that could include a berm or architectural.
Right, it would give a little more flexibility to the code.
Yeah.
All right, who wants to look into that and build into a motion?
I'm gonna, while he's writing it out, because I'm gonna, because I know he's going to have the second part of this. I'm going to move that the, that we forward a rec, record, the following recommendation to the city council. That we do not, the thirteen twelve dash one about gates is unnecessary. Thirteen thirteen dash eight about zero escaping. We adopt the staff section on trees located on the bottom of page three and the top of page four. Recommend the thirteen dash thirteen dash six be not approved. And the thirteen dash fourteen dash three be approved with the language that Commissioner Skoski is just about ready to speak out.
Making a motion, pressing it down somebody else's line.
Yeah.
The language being in thirteen dash fourteen dash three, halfway down, loading areas for delivery or freight vehicles shall be designed to provide sufficient area for the vehicles to be, be completely screened from the public view during loading or unloading process. Exception, if the doors are in view of the street, that they be screened with trees and shrubbery or have a combination of decorative design elements that are approved by both the design review committee and the planning commission.
Would that be the language or?
Yes, that is the language for the motion.
And then what about at the very end, the if doors are more than a hundred, is that stricken at the very end?
Yes, yep.
So a motion by Commissioner Green? Second. Okay. Second by Commissioner Skoski, discussion to the motion. Commissioner Pack?
Thank you. The only word that I would change is loading and unloading. I believe you said loading or unloading?
Yes, thank you. Loading and unloading, agreed.
Question for Commissioner Green is you were, just lost my, my page. As you were recommending adoption of the staff change to thirteen dash thirteen dash eight. Were you including the, what the applicant was recommending?
No, I, I'm talking about the staff recommendation that's the optional text that's written by the staff. That's op, on the bottom of page three that says for a food manufacturing facility and it goes to the top of page four. So I, I'm recommending the adoption of the optional staff language there.
Is that underlying portion the applicant's recommended?
No, that.
Language or staff?
That was staff, isn't it?
Yes. Says a, an optional text that's written by staff and then underneath on, on two there, starting at the very bottom, the last three words on page three.
Because everywhere else, the underlying stuff was with the applicant, so I just wanted to make sure.
Yeah, right, the paragraph before it says the following is optional text for consideration, written in the staff.
Yeah, so it would be the last three words on page three, very bottom, and the underlying text at the top of page four.
Correct, with all staff.
Right.
All right, that's, yeah, that's, that was the intent there.
That's correct.
So the applicant might have some additional comments or suggestions on this. That would be, that would be an out of turn discussion item.
And that we dispense with the rules for a moment so that we can have the applicant come back up and what's their concern.
Second by Commissioner Green, any discussion of that motion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Please, sir.
It was nothing to disagree with. I, I guess I just want to clarify on the gate thing. I'm not saying anybody's wrong. Staff is the one that told us we had to, because we could not secure our entire site because we're, we're, we're gating in front of the public parking. And so they're the ones that told us we had to have this in here or we would not be allowed to gate it. I'm just saying that came from staff.
That is correct, but since that time, I, I met with the planner who reviewed your site plan and it's, our, yeah. My interpretation is that, that you can definitely gate it.
Perfect, and we're good with it, we just want to clarify before this.
While we've already suspended the rules and dispensed with our normal procedure here, any comments on the, the changes that we are currently proposing?
No, I think, I don't, I'm not going to speak for, for you, but I think what we're, what, what we're hearing is, it's helpful. And it's things that it's just going to help us achieve that, that rate.
Just wanted to add one comment and this was very informative to me, this is my first experience and all of that, some great points. And one of the things that you brought up, I wanted to make sure that you all know that there was never, from the beginning, an intent to come in one way and try to change it. In fact, from day one before I decided to put this on, I met with the city manager, the mayor and the, and the commission, expressing my, one of my, this was one of my, my issues. And it was their recommendation because otherwise we'd have to wait months and months and months to get here before we would move forward. So on good faith, I moved forward. And the, the second thing I wanted to say that was, I thought, one of the great things that you said was, you know, some laws are antiquated and the city and some of the other laws should mesh together. Honestly, putting a gate is more expensive for me. It's not something that I want to bring it on. I mean, it does deter people from going in and kids and all kind of mischiefs from happening. And so the food safety aspect of the federal laws are far broader than the cities. And all of those puts more burden on us, but at the end achieves what you said exactly, food safety for all. And this is something that we want to do. And so appreciate all your comments and thank you for considering this.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, did you have a second on your main motion, the, the recommendation to the council?
Give it to Commissioner Skoski second. Very well, any further, this.
Very well, any further discussion to the motion?
I'd just like to really quickly thank Julie for all of her, I'm sorry, Julie. That's all.
So you don't want to thank me or apologize?
Cool. Thank you for all your hard work and I apologize for our...
Sorry for putting you through this.
Uh, very well, uh, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries six to zero. Which brings us to the last item on our agenda, uh, another tax amendment, secured self-storage in SC two zone, uh, to allow indoor secured self-storage as a conditional use in the SC two zone. Uh, JHB Realty Advisors, uh, Jeffrey Burnson's the applicant. You, sir, are left alone.
Oh, yeah, well, it's a terrible, terrible...
Jeff Burnson, JHB Realty Advisors here with this tax amendment, um, request, um, address 724 South Union Park Avenue, Mid Valley, Utah.
Chris Hartel. Chris Hartel, uh, three twenty west, five hundred south, uh, suite two hundred, Bountiful, Utah.
Um, Chris is actually a principal involved in instigating this. I don't know how best to say that, but instigating this insurrection, I suppose. Anyway, uh, I'm looking here, figuring how I could go about this actually and, and having looked at the copious, uh, prepared comments from Scott and the, the planning department, uh, how best to maybe, uh, address some of these issues that were put forward. Um, but basically, I think I would like to start out by explaining the genesis of this whole thing. Uh, we were, we were involved in looking at a specific property that was mentioned in the notes here, uh, Ninety South Redwood Road, the old RC Willie space. Um, and, and throughout this comment as well as our request, one of the, one of the views is I've been doing this business, meaning the business of real estate, state owned brokerage and development for almost, well, going on my forty-second year, so I've been doing it a long time, seen a lot of changes. I remember West Jordan in nineteen seventy-five, seventy-six, seventy-seven, I mean, there was not a lot out here in Harriman and points further southwest, there was nothing there pretty much. And so I really appreciate seeing the growth of the city and also now what I have the opportunity to see, because I see it as an opportunity for both us and both the city, is the opportunity to move the city to the next step. Because obviously every city takes steps backwards as they move forward and what we see is the changing scope of the demographic, of retail tenant requirements, of needs and, uh, obviously of, uh, the community and the citizenry supporting those specific centers that were developed perhaps, you know, years ago and done under a scope and a purview that's changed significantly since that time. Hence, the purpose of the text amendment is to apply and, and to look forward to an opportunity to change the complexion of some of these centers throughout the city that could actually augment and increase retail sales. I know one of the comments within, uh, that, that had been made in here was the fact that allowing the text amendment to include indoor self-storage would eliminate sales tax dollars. Um, granted, there's not a lot of sales tax involved with storage, self-storage units, but at the same time, in a shopping center or an area under an SC two, SC one, SC three zone, that has become severely blighted. And I only say that because RC Willie's been vacant for four years. That's a blight on a city. I mean, it has caused significant issues with leasing up the space on the north side of that center. In fact, there'll be another tenant leaving in June. So that's a twenty-three hundred square foot tenant that will be gone, leaving three vacancies on that side. And again, it's what can we do as, in the city to help the city take some of these different properties that might be located in different areas of the city? You have seventy-eight hundred south, you've got this Ninety South, you've got thirteen hundred west in Redwood, you've got a lot of different areas where you're getting a lot of vacancies in your big block spaces. There are no big box tenants anymore taking up those spaces in some of these community centers. They're looking more for the big regional type locators. That's where they're looking to go if they're going anywhere. It was interesting, I just was reading the other day, where fifty percent of Christmas sales will be done online this year. I mean, that's significant. Forty-seven percent of Amazon's, uh, sales are, are distributed within twenty miles of that forty-seven percent, uh, purchasing power. Their goal is to get to sixty percent within twenty miles of a regional distribution center. I mean, that's going to be extremely impactful as situations in cities change. You'll notice now that what big center, big areas, community centers are going to, they're going more to the opportunity of creating, uh, an experience for this, for the family, entertainment, activities, events that can be created, that can be participated in over a period of, of multiple visits, et cetera, et cetera. You look at the aquarium that has been, you know, that was put out in Draper, uh, unbelievable the attendance that that has. So these are the types of things that are now being attractions too, uh, and augmentations to, uh, retail shopping center areas. So the purpose of the text amendment here, which I think is in keeping with the general plan, where it specifically states that it's not a static document, it's a document that's dynamic and it's open to change and it needs to change. You have to have the ability to make some decisions, to make some changes. And allowing a text amendment for a building, and I know I put in definitions per, uh, the city planning staff's recommendation, uh, for, uh, functional, physical and, uh, visible obsolescence, the, the, the fact of, of what each of those three things mean in the retail community. Well, and then I also noticed in here that there was a comment that dealt with that all of these are all extremely subjective, such as ceiling height, insufficient parking, et cetera. Those are not subjective. I will tell you, every retail tenant that is looking for space will tell you what objective they are. They will not touch a building that doesn't have an eighteen-foot ceiling. Then you go into your distances on center of your support columns. You've got sixteen, eighteen-foot on center support column structure, that is, that doesn't work. They need much more, much wider open space areas in which they'll develop their, uh, their flooring capacity. So again, that becomes, you know, an issue. Parking, when RC Willie, and I just use RC Willie just as a case, but I can probably name several others, since this is a citywide text amendment, I understand that a lot of gravity goes along with your decision. But what I'm looking at is I'm looking at, at a space, seventy-six thousand square feet, and there are several spaces around the city that are like this, and you have parking that is basically only adequate for about forty thousand feet. So again, a retailer comes in that may want to take all that space, if they can get past the ceiling height and the support column, uh, spread that you have within the interior of the space, then it comes to parking. You can't park it for them. So what happens is you have a building that sits. You've got a Kmart that's vacant, that sits. You've got a brand of furniture that's vacant, that sits. You've got a stock lumber that's coming in, that's vacant, that sits. You've got square footage right across the street from here that was vacant and sat and the school district bought it and is, is, uh, is in that facility. I don't know that they pay sales tax. I don't know that they pay property tax. I think that's a significant loss to the community. Wherein if it's allowed to have a text amendment that's a reasonable within the city limits of allowing some of this space to be used up with indoor self-storage, which is needed in the city, um...
My, it's, uh, we had a survey down, the city is five hundred thousand square feet is deficient within a five mile area of this site we're talking about. Another comment that I wanted to make before we run out of time, we've seen time and time again, uh, Bountiful has had several empty buildings that, uh, were empty for years. They tore down the JCPenney store, finally after being empty for ten years, put in a part of the building there. Uh, Dick's Market has been empty for about five or six years now. Max was empty for a long period of time, other than the Halloween store and the very unique boutique. Ogden had, um, uh, Fred Meyer, a hundred and seventy-five thousand square foot building that remained empty for ten years. They got lucky, uh, a clinic came in and they just torn it down in the last couple of weeks. But that's after ten years of, of sitting and becoming a blight and a hazard to the community. And I think that's what we're proposing is that this is allowed because, uh, with the parking field, um, the storage units are not only gonna eliminate some of the need for parking, but we're also adding another ten, uh, twelve thousand square feet to the front of the building so we can use the parking there. We're screening, uh, with the bank entrance to the self-storage. Uh, there are other facilities that have done this. Farmington has an old Kmart that they turned into, uh, that up on Van Winkle and fifty-six hundred south, they've done the same thing. I don't like the plan that they've come up with because you have a huge parking field and not the else. But they, they engineered the whole thing and it looks a lot better. We're also adding another screen with a, um, rest of the...
No, you're good.
Oh, thank you. I was gonna hurry on that. Um, but yeah, I think there are some elements that could be written into this to make it a win for the city instead of a loss. And I, I've lived in Bountiful my entire life and I've seen these type of things, uh, in Centerville and Bountiful, but I've seen others. Uh, you've got a dying one up in Lighton on Fairfield and Gentile right now, that the city's very concerned, what are we gonna do with that property? And so this allows a different use and keeps the quality up. Uh, if you haven't been to these other facilities, I, I really recommend you go because it may not be what you have in mind for the self-storage industry. This is a new side of the industry, it's clean, it's professional, it looks just like any other storefront. So...
If I may, just, again, let's take this back to citywide, since this is a citywide text amendment and forget the project that, that was the genesis of our desire to do this. But for the whole, for the city as a whole, I, I'll make one comment about storage units. Now granted, they don't provide a lot of sales tax, but they do provide property tax increment. And right now, self-storage is the number one investment vehicle in the United States for real estate. It had over a nineteen percent increase in value year to year. And that is significant in property tax dollars. That makes big changes when you're talking millions of dollars. We're talking about a potential storage unit complex of the forty or fifty thousand square foot facility being in somewhere in the neighborhood of four and a half to five and a half million dollars just itself.
Actually, the developers bear up to be about ten million dollars just on the storage side of it.
I have to hold Chris down.
Yeah, for a total of about nineteen million dollars, which I don't know what the, uh, assessment is now, but I know it's far short of that.
And again, the other thing that this creates is it creates the opportunity for a developer and a land user to actually augment the valuation of the center by virtue of creating additional space, as we put in our text amendment, that you, that, that developer or owner would be required to add additional retail space concurrent with the destruction of that storage complex. So in other words, you're not going to be stuck with storage units and nothing done up front or nothing done to refurbish the center. But if you're putting in smaller tenants rather than trying to go after your big blocks, number one, they pay more rent, number two, they have more visits generally, and number three, it provides an opportunity to provide some, some sorely needed services, like one in particular that's looking for space around your city right now, are urgent care facilities. And those definitely provide, uh, a use and a need for, for a city, for its well-being and it's, uh, you know, just, just for, for taking care of citizens' needs. And again, what that does by being able to shorten that parking field up too, it becomes more sustainable, it gives you the opportunity to reduce your heat island effect that's created by these large expanses of parking lots that are no longer used. Now granted, the, the, the verboce of my text amendment was probably not totally correct. I'm not an attorney nor do I play one on TV or anything like that. But what I do do is I do look at, at what I believe would be in the very best interest of any community that I am involved in. Because again, I say, I've been in this business forty-two years, I have never been sued, I have never had a complaint, I have never had anybody come back to me and say, Jeff Burnson, you told us the story. I like to level and I like to be upfront. I really, really believe this is in the best interest of this city to do so. And if you have any questions of us at this point, please ask. I've got comments here, I've read through your city plan, um, I, I probably know it almost by heart and to quote it, but, but I would just suggest if you have some time to just take a look at, uh, at your goal two, um, under your policy three, goal two, your zoning ordinances. And then the last one is, uh, goal four, for the commercial goals and policies encouraging the reuse, um, rehabilitation, revitalization, revitalization of vacant and or obsolete buildings. And I think it's important to know and understand again, this general plan of yours is not a static plan, it's a living, life vibrant, uh, and organism, organism, as I guess you could put it that way, that is here for the benefit of the city. It was created by people I think who had great foresight and forethought to do so. So I'm done.
So you mentioned a, a number of different, uh, retail outlets around the state, uh, that are in similar circumstances to what we see here, uh, at some of our, our, our larger corridors, um, and you can find probably just about every city in the state, uh, as just as I think as I drive through. How many of those opted to, to replace those with indoor self-storage?
Well, I'm... The indoor philosophy, the two that we're aware of are the, uh, Kmart, uh, in Farmington, the old Kmart. I don't think what was on fifty-six hundred south...
It's been three or four different...
...Winkle, but that's been empty for eons. And then they quietly gave in, did holes and...
Not actually, yeah.
...treasure bean park and, you know, this was just the end of that. They couldn't get any additional users. And they, they found that, that dollar per square foot was far superior to what was available in retail. You end up with these, I call them CD E-type of tenants, you know, that you're gonna go through and burn, 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 eventually it did die. So I hope that answers your question.
So there's indoor self-storage now with that Kmart at the north end of Farmington?
Yes, just right off of Shepherd Lane, uh, Highway nine. Their biggest problem is that, and I think this is something that needs to be addressed, is the parking field, and I think Jeff brought that up. I mean, they've got a, I think it's about a seventy thousand square foot building and they've got parking for it, but it's just a big empty block that they've got nothing with. But I think when you're doing these things, you have to think about the long-term factor. It's not, you know, honestly, you guys threw this, you're going through it, but it's not gonna ruin the debt, it's, we'll move on to another project. But I agree with Jeff, I, as we've spent a lot of time doing this, I think myself, what do I want in my city? And, uh, I, I can tell you, I hated driving by the Max building in Bountiful. I drove by that building for fifteen years and it was mostly a blight and a, and a terrible situation in the city. Uh, the city ended up allowing, uh, Brian Moore, they come in and tear down their little credit union on the front and some B and C grade tenants, and then he did some, uh, housing behind. But I think that's really the question. If not this, what are we gonna do, uh, to fix these blighted buildings? Because they will only get worse, I've seen it.
So the only one I can picture is on, is on Fifth South about Fifth West, uh, an indoor self-storage, um, it's in the middle of an industrial district.
Oh, are you talking in Salt Lake?
Yes.
Yeah, that's the brand new building that was built.
But it's in the middle of an industrial district, not...
Yeah, kind of, I, it's one of those transitional, yeah.
Well, there's a big factor sometime right next to it and...
You got AC pro liters across the street, so...
So, yeah.
The complexion of that area will be changing though, I guarantee you over the next probably three or four or five years downtown with the prices of, of real estate. But again, going back to the fact here, I think a benefit to the city of, of allowing this text amendment to go through, should it be something that, that, uh, you see some, some value to, would be the fact that most developers having the ability to come in and do this concurrent with making additional improvements to the center. And I'm not saying that you say, you know, to heck with the, the retail property here, we're gonna turn this into a storage complex property, no.
The storage becomes a, a... Freeze, revitalize, revitalize, this is a culture that the city has had no... That was made there.
Sales tax oriented, but an RDA is is obviously tax increment, sales ta- or property tax increment. And so you're looking. Big box space, seventy-six thousand square feet, and you have parking for forty-five thousand square feet. How do you ever build that up and get a tenant in here? Cause whether you pay any kind of rent, take your time for your expenses, it doesn't happen. And so these are just some of the issues that Jeff looked at. It's not your responsibility to make your developer or property owner successful in this business. I understand that. But if you can get new development going on in any part of your city at any time, that is when you have synergistic effect across the street, diagonally and other parts of the city where they are seeing this activity, it creates a synergy. Who needs an excitement? Westmore is, what's going on in Westmore?
I just wanna get a answer. Uh I guess it's a mission or something. I'm wondering. I'm not sure that that Van Winkle is the inventory city. I think that's actually the part that's actually moving. I don't know why they would have done that. If you've seen it, it's actually turned out pretty well. I think if they did some additional planning, um it would work. Conversely, though, you've got many other cities uh allowing as a conditional use with a whole school of conditions. So I think that, I hope that answers your question. This was Scott.
Thank you. Um first, I think it's inevitable that that you're trying to reuse, you know, rather than just knock down something else.
Um trying to catch you're good salesman.
But I have a couple of issues, um and a lot of it. So in the verbiage on inch four, you say the active material structure of small shop are innovated together with self-storage components. Would expand the building toward the street with additional shop space in the repelling street corner. Uh partial disor stable restaurant, fast food, other things. Um a lot of that verbiage really suggests uh smaller uh expandability toward the street. Um I'm wondering, in in the other units that you've done, have you had built buildings out in front of these, the screen in front of the public view? Um that approach, I I apologize. I only have one of these. I only have a couple of different ones passing on. You can just.
Just kinda give you a perspective of what we're looking at on Ninety South.
This will be the idea of talking about having additional current outcome of more walkable and service. Okay, and with that, you mentioned the cost uh that you would uh update the sun and the deck. Um does that include the facade on all four sides of the building or is that just the side that's basically road?
The north, the north side is updated within the last ten years. I think it looks pretty good. I think we're just talking east side and maybe aiming to the south and west side. The west side is not received immediately, but now it's a wall.
Right, okay. Um and number three, it says uh it applies to existing vacated uh one hundred percent of the seasonally notified by the town because it was a better building or functional handle because it would be obsolete. Commercial retail abilities in excess of forty thousand square feet. Existing vacated is really, that's really open ended. If you can be existing and not be vacated, more. And then with that word, that would mean that somebody could move into it the day after you just go to vacate it.
And again, I mean, uh people have this uh set up in different cities on there uh conditional use. Jeff, I think that's how we can.
I think that's happened in our nation. That would be two decades to do this. And I I would agree with that.
Yeah, I would be more of a worker.
Or I would suggest that would be easily, easily agreeable to me because if it's not, if it's been vacated for three months, I mean, there's not a problem. You can fix that problem. There's no problem. You've you've got a solution probably to that one.
And the other question that we had, um.
Yeah, and number six there says no more than forty percent of the square prime shells face the public, face the public driveway. Remaining sixty percent of prime shells incorporated in redevelopment and the commercial retail facade. Um does that forty percent that faces the roadway include the business sales office associated, that's associated with.
If it hasn't backed, then I remember you'd be able to see that. I think it's a whole new dimension. You've actually got a retail, it's actual retail that has been bumped out. So you have relief there, architectural relief, creating that setback for that storage complex.
Okay.
So so it gives it some kind of depth and dimension, also creates and entices people to come in and say, hey, what's going on here? This is, this is, this is nice. And again, like I say, it provides, I mean, you've got what, four hundred plus or minus apartments next door, places for people to put things. I mean, that's great. You let people to store things.
The only store that's not nearby. That's where the family stores is. It creates new consumers. You laugh and you smile, that's good.
I know it's before this.
Um also, number five there, um says no more than eighty percent of the vacant space may be used for secured indoor self-storage. The remaining space must be redeveloped into commercial or retail use. Um.
Yeah, there's. With that, with that also, I think it's odd that some of the chairman of the administration has already developed a way to move forward.
But just limiting it to commercial or retail use, I think might be kind of stubborn. I want the issue if we do move forward with it, but.
Well, I think, I think as a city, you would probably like to see more of the retail there than even having any office. Now, obviously, you're gonna have some professional space. You're gonna have some dentists, you're gonna have some doctors. If we put in a, uh like for example, we have the opportunity to put in an urgent care facility, that's gonna be twelve thousand square feet of urgent care facility. So in essence, that's professional office, isn't it?
Yeah, well, just in reporting the the verbiage of, if we do report the verbiage of the code, then it has.
Yeah, that's. It would certainly be applicable that an office user could certainly lease the space as well. We don't discriminate as to use. Except certain things that the city discriminates against, we certainly don't approve of certain uses.
Yeah, I don't know if we discriminate or.
Discriminate's not a bad word.
It's just illegal discrimination that you wanna avoid.
Question to ask.
I'm just curious as to what types of business you anticipate this model drawing to the front end of the.
I think you're gonna have some retail. This is in the same spot, so it's a percent of the building on the corner. Have doctors there, uh urgent care. Uh I think just. I think that the north side is different from this side as well. So that's what we anticipate. That's, you know, we're we're putting a pretty significant amount of money into that twelve thousand square feet, not just to appease you, but it's, we wanna do it because we feel it has to use.
Thank you.
Any other questions to the applicants?
So we're we're talking about twelve thousand square feet in the corner of Ninety? Is that what you're talking about?
One thousand and another fifty-two hundred square feet, then you've got another forty thousand, thirty-five thousand square feet on the north side. That's all your, your out past, which would be your uh, check a little bit here.
Yeah, I I'm I'm talking specifically the storage building itself.
Yes, specifically the storage, you'd be looking at about eighteen thousand feet.
Okay, thank you.
That's just in a specific model, right?
You've got seventy, you've got seventy-five thousand square feet of storage. All right, thank you.
So uh I'm not gonna take too much time. I think I've been pretty clear in my report, some of the concerns that we've had, but I think it's important. Uh well, before I get into that, to Commissioner Sikowski's uh comments, it, this is, this is an intriguing idea that's been brought forward and from a planning perspective, um it's great to see uh people coming to us with possible solutions to many of our, our dark stores, our dark stores, uh especially along that corridor down there along Ninety. We've got more up to the north. Uh most definitely, the uh the way that people do shopping has changed. Um and and so, you know, that's, it's a reflection on on some of the uh the brick and mortar stuff we've got in town, but. Um so that being said, uh just briefly, just for the public record, um page one of the staff report goes into some of the background as to how we've added storage units in West Jordan. Uh historically, it's been permitted from nineteen eighty to two thousand as a conditional use in our general commercial uh light and heavy manufacturing zones. Um back in in two thousand, there were concerns that storage facilities would continue to occupy uh additional land that could otherwise be used for conditional uh commercial development, not only in our commercial areas, but also our industrial areas. And so at the time, the council took took uh storage units as as use out of the uh the general commercial and our heavy industrial zones. We wanted to preserve that for job-producing, you know, heavy industry. So we we have a few of the grandfather uh storage units along Redwood, uh off seventy-eight, that, you know, the extra space, the King Arthur. Uh and they're, they're legal non-conforming now and they can continue to operate as they currently sit today. Uh we've already talked about some of the research that I've done, uh also contacted Bountiful, uh who's denied this type of use. Uh Also, I think it's important to know that, I I think the the stats that that Mr. Bertholdson brought up are 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 actually quite good for me. Um the amount of self-storage uh applications uh that we have right now, we've got actually, I put four active uh storage developments. We've got five currently that are seeking building permit right now. And they just keep running through the the door. You never see it because they're all in our M-one zone. Um we've had, you know, a dozen over the past eight months and so, yes, there is definitely a need in the market. And and so we we see that. We're in the front lines. We review those applications every day. So um hearing those stats and as far as the 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 revenue that they can generate is, that makes, that makes perfect sense why we see so many. Um a- as I go, again, I'm not gonna belabor the point, but unless you want me to delve into anything specifically, but um a- as we look at the properties around town that are zone SC two, that that is our most widely used commercial district in the city. And i- if this proposal was perhaps in the uh the CM, our our commercial manufacturing district, perhaps we wouldn't have so much concern. But because we have SC two all over the city on some of our most prominent corners, uh there's concern that uh even with with all the conditions and restrictions that we may place upon this, that that we could use, that we could lose some some valuable real estate uh for for other types of redevelopment. Um and once, you know, as I, as I've done research in other communities around the the country, it's, it's pretty evident that uh you know, it does work for for an initial, you know, jumpstart to a community at a little dead center. But overall, um you know, at what expense? And so there, my job is to look at the the long-term uh vision of the city and to to help policymakers. Obviously, this is the city council's decision for uh for this policy call, but um I I think there are other options out there that that we could employ to jumpstart these these dead centers. And uh once, once we allow these storage units in there, they're gonna stay because they're such money generating entities. You know, once, I hate to make the comparison, but they're very similar to like a mobile home park. Once you get, once you have those in, they're almost impossible to get out. So um I've gone through the the different findings of fact, um and feel that uh the 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 criteria is listed in the staff report uh for a negative recommendation are are well-founded and justified. And be happy to answer any questions that you might have at this time.
Thank you. Um I just wanna start out, I I like the picture. I think that that's a really neat concept. And I think in a vacuum, I really like it. I think it's a really neat concept. I like the design. However, taking it out of the vacuum, I have two issues. One, and Scott kind of talked about this as opportunity cost. We we can take this right out of the gate and it's a really good jumpstart, but I think that we're shortchanging ourselves. You mentioned the property across the street. You know, maybe if we held on to that a little longer, it would be a lot different today than it was, than it is now. You know, maybe if we held on to that a little longer, it would be a lot different today than it was, than it is now. The question I have is in, on page two in the packet, it says, the very bottom, section thirteen, five E, five C, talks about the distance between indoor self-storage and several different, um, locations, including pawn shops, bail bonds, check cashing places. Commissioner Green and I were looking, there is one around the corner, and there's another one across the street. And our question was, do, do, are either of those outside of that thousands, that thousand feet? Because it doesn't seem like it would be to us. So there are no open check cashing places?
Oh, just in the center, just around the corner.
What about the one across the street in front of Smith's?
We can't really take comments of kind of randomly, because I don't end up on the report record.
So that, that's a great point. Um, I, I would have to pull up our business, our current business licenses to see if they are indeed, you know, vacated. But, yeah, great point. And we would have to take a look at that if, in fact, if that's, if that's... Well, that's something that I will check on before this goes to city council.
Thank you.
Awesome, thank you. Um, just a question, Scott, with, could this be something that we could do as just a, like a long line, long lock-in, right, conditional use for that, where it dried out? Kind of in the entire city, though, to do something like this? And, and don't get me wrong, I understand that's certain, at the same time, um, you know, I don't want to shoot the entire idea in the foot right off the gate. So, just curious.
We're going to run time for a long time.
Perhaps, if, if, if there's any response from staff, I'll defer to our deputy city attorney on that one.
Yeah, you have to be careful on, in that regard, because you've got to treat everybody in the same class, the same way. So it's got, you got to avoid being arbitrary and capricious, equal protection problem. So, you know, you've got to identify what zone and then apply, give the same option to everybody in that zone. I mean, sometimes you see with an ordinance where you limit so many within a certain proximity. You can only have so many units at, at one location, and the locations have to be, you know, at least a half mile apart, or whatever is another way you can do it. But you have to establish ironclad rules and then uniformly apply them to everyone.
Right, yeah.
Thank you. Uh, so Mr. Leinhard, in a perfect world, what, what would staff like to see done with such a big area, such as a vacated, uh, Kmart or... Yeah, what, like, what, you know, I, I know we kind of have a vision, but then I'm just curious. If, if not this, what? Like, what would the utopian idea be for those huge places that, that are out there?
Well, my, my vision sometimes does not drive with, uh, some of our elected officials' vision. Um, nor, nor should they, um, but...
They don't hear me in this.
But, but as, as I look, for example, as I look in this area, uh, there are a lot of other businesses that were trying to recruit to the area. However, uh, as indicated earlier in the meeting today, rooftops generate the need for, for, for business. And, and so there, if I were to, uh, be keen for a day and had endless supply of money, I would, I would probably put some, some higher density housing, uh, near these commercial areas and, uh, provide, provide, uh, that need for, for commercial, uh, you know. We've had this Smith Marketplace, obviously, right there, but Albertson's used to be there and survived for a number of years. Uh, our city continues to grow and grow and grow. I mean, we're close to a hundred and fifteen thousand people now. And, and so while the shopping trends have changed, um, there are still general daily necessities that, that still, people still need to go to brick and mortar to, to find service. Um, but, uh, you know, there's, there's entertainment options that Mr. Bereson brought up. Um, we're working with Jordan Landing to inject more of those entertainment lifestyle changes in Jordan Landing. Similar things could be injected down here. So, uh, it, it's hard to nail down exactly, but, uh, there, there are options out there.
Thank you.
Phil, nine is SC one?
It's SC three, that's regional commercial.
Regional, right.
Yeah.
I also ask, because, as you mentioned, I mean, it's, it's not just us, it's, it's this model, that SC two district. Um, and we can reach for the result that, uh, they, I think it's about ten years from, uh, to sell. And it's reasonable that to have a lot of people.
So it's just outside.
You're really down the road, haven't. Um, so with that in mind, uh, is that an activated model? It leaves a, a new, completely new perspective.
Well, the example that you brought up was a mid-block, uh, commercial area. Um, this is at the, at the, in the crosshairs of, of two of the, the largest roads that we have in the city. And, and granted, I don't want to focus just on this, this corner or this area, because this, again, applied to all SC two. But, um, yeah, that, that's a valid question. Um, and, and, uh, perhaps we do need to, to think outside of the box. But again, this is just my opinion, that, that storage is, is kind of a, a short-term fix to a long, a long-term problem that we've got here. And, uh, believe you me, you know, my boss, uh, is, is working very diligently at, at trying to solve this puzzle down here.
And I'm just guessing, that is the answer, it's just, living in West Jordan for eight years, there's often full loads, about time I moved down, and all it's like, it's just an empty SC two zones.
Yeah.
These days.
Well, thank you. Unsure of how long the deliberation among the commissioners will be. May I move, if we take just a two-minute break?
I think I can wrap this up now. Sorry. I've overruled. Uh, we'll, we'll turn this for a couple of minutes.
So you can, and then you can open the public hearing? We haven't even gotten to the public hearing part.
We don't have a whole lot of public hearing.